All right. Welcome to Cleveland Heights City Council Committee of the Whole. It's April 7th at 5:00 PM. Eddie, would you pretty please call the role?
Cobb.
Here.
Kuta.
Here.
Petrus.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Maddox. Russell.
Here.
Fosh.
Here. All right, big agenda tonight. The first hour, though, we're gonna talk about, kind of gonna be an extension of the special committee meeting we had last Wednesday. So I'm gonna just do a kind of a little review, just to set this up, and then we'll go through the agenda items that we talked about again last Wednesday. So the topics we went over were the Horgan resignation, the mayor's wife's key card access to City Hall, the independent investigation of the mayor's wife and a city employee, workplace safety, possible charter remedies. We talked about the Burgess and Burgess survey slash contract. We talked about the mayor's plans regarding the open city administrator position. Just to remind everybody, Dan Horgan resigned on March 17th. News articles alleging a hostile work environment and an untenable position for the city administrator began surfacing in the news on March 25th. And we know from emails, Horgan resigned because he did not want to be complicit in a toxic work environment that directly involved the mayor's wife. We know that the emails identified came from the former city administrator leading up to his resignation. There were no written responses from the mayor to the former city administrator, as far as we know. The mayor said Horgan's allegations were false. Dan Horgan has since told me that he stands by his allegations that he made publicly on the 25th. Although the term hostile work environment may not be an accurate term in the legal sense, the work environment described in emails was untenable, according to the former city administrator. We know Horgan was the third city administrator to leave this administration and the 12th administrator to leave overall. The mayor said he called for an investigation regarding an incident with the mayor, his wife, and an employee who eventually was, the employee was eventually placed on administrative leave. The mayor declined my invitation to discuss this personnel matter in executive session. It appears the mayor's wife was given key card access credentials to City Hall and some or most of its offices. Those key card credentials allegedly belonged to the mayor and were given to her with his knowledge. It was not clear if the mayor's wife has an office at City Hall, was here daily, had a specific role or permission to interact with staff. It's also not clear if having non-employees with key card access to City Hall and permission to interact with staff is a potential liability to the city that may not be covered by our city's insurance. We know that Burgess and Burgess contract to survey city staff and residents was verbally modified at some point to include in-person interviews with city staff and community leaders. It was decided the method of the survey was to be in-depth, in-person interviews. It was not clear who modified the contract or if any modifications resulted in a reduction to the $48,000 price tag. All right, so council's role and kind of like why we're here now. It is clear that council has a limited but important role regarding the administration. Most matters regarding employee supervision are rightfully left to the mayor. Council does have the power of inquiry and may be able to rigulate, which basically means legislate, access to City Hall for reasons of safety and security, the safety of cities' facilities and employees, the threshold for dollar amounts of city contracts to be reviewed by council, and the addition and modification of city charter provisions that could potentially be voted on by residents. The law director, our law director, is still looking into council's potential investigatory powers, including subpoena power, which is in the Ohio Revised Code. So here are some of the legislative ideas that came out of the April 2nd meeting. So just be prepared to look on the screen. Let's go over these and decide if we want to move forward on any of them. And by forward, I mean, you know, we're gonna give them to the law department to move forward. And who is willing, if any, to take on these initiatives? And that would include, you know, at least coming up with some whereas clauses and maybe some bullet points for guidance for the law department. I'm gonna enforce a one-minute time limit. Please don't get upset, but, you know, we gotta get through this whole thing so we can get through this agenda, because we have a hard stop on this topic at 6:00 PM. So let's see where we're at here. So, yeah, so, and by the way, if I've left anything out, you know, by we, when we get to the end, just, okay, we'll, we'll deal with it. So one-minute time limit to speak, decide whether or not to move forward, just by a show of hands. And then if you want to volunteer to move something forward, please do. Okay, so, so one topic was limiting key card access to City Hall, its offices, and all public buildings to employees and approved independent contractors. Obviously, I'm talking about, or we were talking about not having non-employees have access to that. So we know the mayor's wife had key card access, which means that other non-employees conceivably could. And council was gonna consider the liability to the city. This raises safety and security issues if non-employees are permitted key card access. So I just wanna hear from, you know, if you're interested in moving this forward and any additions. Sure, please.
Did Director Hanna get back to you on what our authority is in these matters?
Not, no, but I did go over these with him, and he said we could do that. He fortunately cannot be here, but he's willing to look at anything we bring. Okay. Is, am I missing anything here?
No, I just wanna say that prior to my father's passing, I think the last meeting of February, I started to draft some legislation. One is an ordinance establishing security measures for access to City Hall, facilities, meetings, and staff interaction. The second one that's been, will to the law director to look at is an ordinance for facility use. The other one is an ordinance requiring transparency and accountability for contracts and consulting agreements for $7,500.
Hold off on that one, just for now, because that's gonna come up later. So here's what I want to ask you. Are you willing to take the, I mean, I don't know if that's gonna be one piece of legislation or more than one, but does this fit into that umbrella?
Yes.
Okay, so you're, you're willing to follow up on this?
I'm willing to follow up on all three of those.
Just on a show of hands, are, are you okay with moving this forward to the law department? Okay, good, yeah, go ahead.
So, you know, I think one of the most important pieces of this is transparency and an audit trail.
In what trail?
An audit trail.
Audit trail.
So every time you swipe in and swipe out, I mean, there's some system that knows where you are.
Okay.
There has been, you know, you hear things, you know, people are concerned that, you know, someone unauthorized has come into my office and looked through it. And this is the kind of stuff that would put those issues to bed. So, I mean, I do think it's important that we, we do this for a transparency purpose, but we also have to recognize the fact that people could have guests in, in this space. I mean, the mayor could have his wife come in as a guest. I mean, so could, you know, my wife come in as my guest, although I don't have a key card for this place.
That's what this is about.
Yeah, I mean, so I think we need to be cognizant of the fact that respectful enough that under normal working situations, that guests are gonna be coming into this facility. Oh, I know the number.
So, you know, this is one general complaint I have about, like, legislation on the federal level. When you don't have the details in there, then the bureaucrats get to fill in the blank spots. So, I mean, what I'm hearing is, you know, pay attention to the details, you know, even this, this detail, because if it's not there, you know, then, then it's up to the discretion of the person that's, you know, overseeing.
Well, once we have given, everyone has said to move forward to the law director. Once the law director and I come up with a formality of how this legislation should be written, not taking on a lot of my things that I put in it.
Right.
Then I think it should be distributed among council members so they can also see it as well. And add, and I'm asking and requesting that anyone, that any, the three pieces of legislation I move forward, that you all look at it. If there's something that needs to be added or amended that you think needs to be in there, feel free to let me know, and I will do that.
Well, we, we have to be careful about the feel free to let me know part.
I know, but let Addie know.
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you. Looking through that.
All right. All right, you can go to the next one. All right, so change spending limits, requiring council to approve from 50,000, so it's at 50,000 now. Do we want to change it? I should say, it's, oh, you see, it's, do we want to change it? And if we want to change it, what do we want to change it to?
I was partial to this idea. I like this idea. But as I was thinking about it, I realized that if we were to reduce it to, let's say, $25,000, that would create more work for the law department, which is already strained. So I was thinking, and I guess I'm putting it out there for folks to give feedback on, I was thinking that maybe we could achieve the same objective of increased transparency by instead requiring that all contracts be publicly available or provided to council. So without us creating more work for the law department, we would still have visibility into the contracts.
Okay.
I'd like to hear from the law department as to how many contracts were actually at issue that, that would be the 25, I'm, I'm thinking the $25,000 amount would be appropriate because I believe it is clear that in the case of this Burgess contract, it was $48,000 in order to essentially hide that from city council, that that had been contracted for. And I am concerned that that's not the only contract of that nature. For example, we were unaware that Unitic had been retained last summer. So I, I think in order to be able to better exercise our oversight, that the amount should be $25,000. And then for the amounts less than that, that, that they, they get posted on the city's website, as Lakewood does with, with their contracts. That's an easy ask, but let's find out from the law department how many contracts are we talking between 25 and 50s.
Okay, yeah, I think that's probably an answerable question. Go ahead.
So I initially felt pretty strong, strongly, just as a matter of trust, and trying to earn back trust to lower that number from 50 to 25. It was in a presentation I made to the finance department, which we really didn't talk about because we were trying to get the budget passed. I do like this idea. I mean, we not only have, I mean, I like the idea that Councilperson Petrus brought up, mainly because it involved both the finance department and the, and, and the legal department, and both departments that we know are challenged to get their work done. I mean, not because they're slow, just because they have a lot of work, and many of our departments, like our finance department, are understaffed. So if we can get to the same end by just having access to these and have them given to us, I think that's a great solution. I think it's a win-win for us, and I think it eases the burden on the administration.
I would agree with everything that's been said. I would like to know what burden it's gonna put additionally on the law department. I think displaying those contracts on the website is extremely important, and it should be done whether or not we do this legislation. But I really want to know how Director Hanna would respond to this particular request, and how many contracts are there between 25 and 50 grand? Because maybe it's not as many as we think, and it would not be an undue burden on them, but we're all looking for transparency. So the other question I have is just a practical one is, how do we make sure that the contracts that are being posted are all there? All-inclusive? How enforceable is this?
I mean, that's a legal question. Go ahead, did you want to?
Well, I believe instead of it. Yeah, I believe if this is stuck in the, in the ordinance, the current ordinance on contracts, that we can feel pretty confident that the law department is not going to violate the ordinance and would bring it to our attention if it is being violated.
Okay, thank you.
If you're looking for someone, if you're looking for someone to take this on with the whereas is?
I think, I think, I think she's already, I'm sorry, Vice President Russell, not she. Vice President Russell has, has already said she would like to do this.
It's already, yeah.
Yeah, please.
It's already in a draft form already, and I can let, I can send it to Addie. Addie, you can send it to.
So, I mean, I, I don't want this to smell like anything. I, I don't need to see it, I mean, until it gets presented back to everybody. I would suggest, though, that let's not wait. Let's get this in the hands of the legal people, and then we can get the feedbacks that, that we're looking for.
And to kind of answer Councilwoman Larson's question, we're gonna meet with the law director on Thursday, and so we'll run all this by him. I mean, I'm gonna send him a memo about tonight, but we'll actually speak with him about what's doable.
May I?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, and as I said, I wrote up all of these as a draft in February. That was a part of my public records request that I kept making public, why I kept asking for these contracts and these consulting agreements, because we had suspicion that things were not being done properly. And I shouldn't say done properly, because I don't know that for a fact, but I wanted to, we wanted to be able to see, be transparent of what was actually happening regarding funds. So all of these were in draft, already put together, and I'm just waiting for you to say, the law director can.
All right, well, thank you. So show of hands on moving this forward, please? All right, very good. All right, next. All right, all city contracts shall be shared with council members within 24 hours of execution, regardless of amount. Now, is that really getting to what you just said?
Well, I'm glad that Councilman Cobb mentioned that Lakewood posted their contracts. I just looked it up. It's very nice. So if they're able to do something like what Lakewood has, for me personally, that would be sufficient. It's a very nice table on the website that lists every single contract. People can easily go on and see it. So if we were able to do that, that would be sufficient.
So let's amend this to include the posting, you know, because.
It's in there.
I mean, it's not just us to need.
It's in there.
Yeah, okay. Show of hands on moving this forward? All right, very good. All right, next. Now, here's one, this kind of came up through a way-too-long conversation, but all city contract modifications are to be in writing and reported in writing to council within 24 hours. I mean, when we found out that that contract was changed, a written contract was changed orally, my thought was, if you look at the slide before this, what difference is this gonna make if we see the contracts, if they're changed, you know, if what we're looking at in the contract may not necessarily be what's going on now? So we need something, I'm not saying this has to be a separate piece, and by the way, this was something we all talked about. This isn't, you know, my thing, but, but the modifications were not in writing, and if council's going to be informed, you know, if this isn't part of it, we're not gonna know what we're looking at, even if it's, whether it's online or, or wherever it is.
President Kuta, I modified my draft to add that from the last meeting.
Okay. Does, does everybody understand what I'm saying here? Because I don't know if I said it clearly.
And the Burgess contract does have a provision, as do essentially every contract that the city executes, that requires that any changes have to be done in writing. And so to the extent that that is happening, then, then they're violating, the city is violating the terms of the contract, and the law department should be letting us know if these contracts are being modified orally, which, an oral modification of a contract is not enforceable.
That's what I was gonna ask. That would be the penalty.
But of course, if the other side, Burgess, goes along with the oral modification, you need a, you need a complaining party to, to call, to insist that the original terms of the contract be followed.
Well, okay, so that's one legal part, but what I'm interested in is the council and the public being informed of changes, because otherwise, just getting the original contract may not be the story. So we're all okay here, everybody?
A quick question for Councilman Cobb. Don't, most of the contracts that we see have in there that provision that changes are to be made in writing?
Yes.
Yeah, so we can assume that if we've seen a contract, we should at least make sure that that particular point is there, so that we guarantee that if anything comes up to change it, that we, we see that exchange in writing.
That's standard boilerplate language in any contract. The problem is that a modification, an oral modification could be done by someone, and the law department would never know. We have to count on whoever is administering the contract to be upfront and honest with council and disclose that modification. The rules only as good as if people are willing to follow it.
So maybe what we need to say is, because we don't know what's gonna happen, modifications, written or oral, should still be reported to council. I mean, I'm not, listen, I'm not advocating oral amendments to, to written contracts. I'm just saying, if that's, if that happens by mutual consent and there is no complaining party, there's not much we can do about that, except say that we were supposed to be informed. Go ahead.
I don't think we should even accept anything orally. It should be in writing for modification, and I think we should just add in the legislation that there will be no oral addendums or modifications to contracts. All contracts should be in writing.
Can, can we do that? Can we, can we make a law that says all, no oral amendments to contracts? I mean, that's, that's basically what it would say.
Yeah, we could do that, but the, that's something that I would, I want to talk to the law director about, under what circumstances the parties could orally modify the contract. That's a bad thing to do, because.
What if they don't have the same?
Well, no, yes, what, what's the understanding? So it, it, it should be done in writing, and the law department should be enforcing that provision.
Yeah, okay.
The other thing is that, and when we amend, if it's a contract that we have approved, and there's a material amendment made to that contract, it needs to come back to council for us to amend it. I think many of the, some of these contracts maybe we're looking at tonight are just continuations of prior contracts that are being amended.
Interesting. I didn't even think about that. Go ahead, council.
So have we received confirmation that this amendment was done orally? Because that was not clear to me at our last meeting. I know that the law director and Mr. Heltzel said that there were no amendments, but was it done over email? If it was, I think that it would be helpful to see that to better understand what specific changes were requested and when that happened.
I thought the mayor said that he made amendments with Burgess, and that's what I thought was, was stated, but I, you know, regardless, we know we want to be informed, and we know that we like the contract that we've been, if, if this all works out the way we hope it'll work out, that the contract we're looking at is indeed the contract. So anyway, so we're all okay with this part of it as well? Anybody not okay with it? All right, next one. Oh, I, I, you know what? I just wanted to say this, because I taught sociology for, for 14 years. A survey is an umbrella term. I know we spent like a half an hour on this, like last week. That is the umbrella term for research methods for collecting data and questionnaires and interviews, whether they're in-person interviews, telephone interviews, that fits under, they're all surveys. They're all surveys, you know? Whether you're doing open-ended questions or closed-ended questions. And, you know, written, email, online surveys, again, so I bring that up because we don't want to ever hear, you know, when we're talking about what is, you know, what are we doing? We're doing surveys. That's what we're doing. That's what was in the contract, and the methodology is always to be determined. You can go to the next one. All right, so charter, now, we don't have to discuss these today, but we're trying to get a charter review, our last charter review meeting scheduled for Tuesday at 5:00.
Send an email out, everyone.
So, but we talked about a charter provision requiring council confirmation of firings for council-confirmed positions. This was the idea that we didn't want directors conflicted when a mayor's action or family member is under investigation, or any kind of conflict of interest. I mean, the problem is, if somebody doesn't want to come forward for that reason, and they can be fired out of hand, you know, it, you know, there could be a conflict. And we did, we, full disclosure, we did discuss this. And I was, I'm gonna say, I was against this in the conversation we had, but I'm rethinking it. This experience has made me want to rethink it. I, I don't think we need to discuss this now, but I do think we should discuss it in, in our next review of the charter. Is anybody against discussing this, the next charter review meeting?
I, I think that'd be great if Addie can just start that, to make sure we go back to it, because we had a lot of discussion.
I mean, we have, I think we discussed it twice, actually. But I, and did we come to a conclusion here?
I don't think we did, but I'll.
You think?
Did we?
I think we did, that we would not make that requirement.
Right. A lot of that focused on what if there was a falling out between whoever the mayor was and the, and the law director? Because of that unique relationship and bond that an attorney has with the client, it would, I think it would, you'd put the lawyer in a, in a horrible position.
So do we exclude, I'm sorry, did we exclude the law director?
Well, I think we just, we're not gonna address it.
Okay.
At all. Now, the other way around this, and we've never discussed this in any of the charter recommendations, in some cities, the law director is an elected official, and that avoids this situation, or the law director actually reports to city council.
Well, it's hired by the city council, that is. So anyway.
And maybe that's something worth revisiting.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, but I, I think we should at least revisit what the options are. If it's not an amendment, maybe we want to do something else.
If I remember correctly, thinking back to the discussion, we added a requirement that there be council approval for the public works director, but otherwise, we didn't make other changes requiring approval to hire or fire.
So it would be finance, planning, public works, and the law director?
And city administrator.
And city administrator, right.
If I remember correctly.
Yeah, I think you're right. Go ahead.
If you, I don't know if anyone saw the videos from the recordings from the Charter Review Commission interviews, but I, I actually made a recommendation that the law director should be hired jointly with the mayor and council, and cannot be fired without council's approval. Yes, because it keeps the law department.
Independent?
Independent, yes.
You know, it, those are the things we need to consider, but we, again, since we have a forum for that, let's just move to the next one. Okay, charter provision that would allow council to go into executive session without the mayor, and here's the rationale. I mean, this is, this is what I, I just kind of gleaned this from the conversation. If council is seeking information from an employee, because we did talk about whether or not we could bring an employee or former employee into executive session, I'm assuming that everybody was thinking it must be done in a non-threatening situation, if the goal is to have the subject speak freely, especially in situations involving, you know, a mayor or a family member or that kind of thing, you know, because if we ever, if we have in, if we do have investigatory power, if we do have subpoena power, if we are going to be an oversight body in some situations that involve personnel, this is something we can visit in, in our, talk about the charter.
Okay, so you're really not proposing this because you want to exclude the mayor? That is not your intention. Your, your, your intention here is, if there is a meeting that council has to have that's subject to some allowable session, and we're bringing an employee in, you're afraid that the employee is going to be, is not gonna be able to speak freely in fear of retribution? That's, that's, that's why you're, that's, I mean, am I reading between the lines correctly?
Yeah, this isn't really me. This is me just kind of extrapolating from the discussion that we had. People were talking about, do we have the right to do this? And there was also talk about retribution. And there was also talk about retribution, not maybe in this context, but in the context of, you know, all this other stuff that's going on. So I just put those two pieces of information together and said, you know, I, you know, with the law director, he is gonna be here later, but I'm not sure we can do this now. And the question is, do, do, should city councils have the option to do this in certain circumstances?
I would say yes, to the extent that we have the ability to go into an executive session, we should be able to do that if it involves a personnel matter involving either the mayor or someone that directly reports to the mayor, or if there is legal action that is pending against the mayor or the city that involves the mayor's conduct and it's a conversation that we want to have an executive session without the mayor being a party to that conversation.
So everybody okay with moving this forward to our next, you know, charter discussion? All right, good. And then I think the next one's the last one. We'll see. Hiring an independent investigator to investigate allegations of a toxic work environment or extending the scope of the current independent investigation, because in our discussions at the table last Wednesday, it was clear to me that there were allegations beyond this incident that, you know, with the one employee that's on administrative leave. And if this independent investigation, whatever they come back with, it won't get to, it ostensibly could not get to a problem that might be a deeper problem. Now, my understanding is I don't think we can modify, you know, the second part of that or extending the scope. I don't think we can modify an independent investigation that's already underway that was commissioned, if you will, by the administration. So then the question becomes, do we want to commission an investigation?
So exactly what clarity do we have regarding this investigation that is now new and possibly ongoing?
I mean, I don't think we know the scope of it. I don't believe, I mean, I don't.
So I'm really, I mean, is the mayor investigating his wife? I mean, that doesn't seem proper.
I don't, I think, I think it's, it's, it's an investigation that's independent of the law department or the mayor.
So, but if the mayor has hired someone to possibly investigate the allegations that Dan Horgan put forth, it seems like that's conflicted? I mean, who, who's gonna trust the results?
I mean, I can't...
I guess...
I can't answer that.
Whenever I brought up that employee was placed on administrative leave, the mayor mentioned the investigation. Later, WKYC reported that the investigation was specific to the mayor's wife at City Hall. I think, now, that's not what WKYC reported, is not what I heard in the meeting. Maybe they heard from the mayor that that's the scope of the investigation. That's not what I heard. And so getting clarification from him on what the scope is, I think, would be helpful.
Well, that would help, but I guess, is there something we wanna do as a council regardless, or do we, do you need that information first? Go ahead.
So at first, you know, my gut feeling was, yeah, this needs to be investigated and it needs to be investigated by an outside source. You know, I spoke to some people, some lawyers in our city that were part of the Charter Review Commission, and it's pretty clear that the mayor's, the mayor's powers are pretty absolute when it comes to administrative tasks and doing such investigations. I mean, there is Ohio Revised Code that lets us come in and do an investigation that the law department would likely push back on because it's not in our charter, but I think you could get around that. I, I almost think that at this point, counsel needs some third-party assistance. I mean, if we had an HR director, I'd, I'd wanna go to our HR director to say, hey, look, you know, how do you, how would you handle this situation? I mean, because I think all of us are guessing, I do think our law department is conflicted just because they, they work for the administration. I think we need to get, I think we need to get another, I'm trying to talk about this, I can't get around this one-minute limitation.
We can, we can come back to you. Go ahead, Councilman Patras.
I feel like, generally speaking, that we owe it to the employees and the residents to try to right this ship. And so an important part of that is gathering baseline data so that we can understand what it is. We are hearing allegations of things. I know, speaking for myself, over the last two weeks, numerous city employees, current and former, reached out to me. And I think that it would be helpful if we were to do something like this so that we could get a good survey of the city employees to understand rather than just hearing an allegation here or there from someone.
So we need, we really need to, to hear from the law director about what we can, I mean, especially on this one, what we can and cannot do.
I would agree with that. We need the law director's opinion because, for one thing, you just even talked about, why would we, extending the scope of the current independent investigation, that doesn't work for me. I think we could've stopped right at that first phrase.
Right.
And the other thing is, I wanna know, we are given the authority to hire consultants. Yes?
Yes.
So do we wanna, or may revise the charter, just perhaps preface with some words that indicate an independent investigator in that list of people that we can hire for consultants?
Well, I don't know, I don't, I'll ask Councilman Cobb, I don't know that we need to enumerate the possibilities of, you know, counsel's, you know, that second paragraph in the, in the clerk ordinance, I'm sorry, that ordinance amendment.
I, we have the ability to hire an outside law firm or an outside HR firm...
Okay.
...to pursue the allegations of a hostile work environment and not in the classic sense where it involves a protected class. We cannot, our employees need a safe place where they can have complaints investigated. You can't have your own HR department or your own HR director who reports to the mayor charged with investigation. One employee is gonna feel safe coming to another city employee to report allegations of misconduct. We had an excellent email from a resident that suggested, you know, as part of this process, there should be a hotline that, as most big organizations have an outside place where an employee can go to make a complaint and remain anonymously, because if it comes to light that you have made a complaint against your employer, even if that complaint is determined well-founded, you're finished with that employer and you're tainted the next time you go to look for a job because no one wants to hire somebody that made a complaint against their prior employer. So there, you have, so we, we have, we have to give them a safe place to be able to do that.
So we'll discuss this with the law director on Thursday. I'll let the record show Councilman Maddox is here. And, I mean, if that sounds right to me, you know, obviously, I'd like to hear it from him. And then, and then we'll just need to have a discussion about if, if we wanna do it, if, you know, I mean, I, is there an appetite to do this if the law director says we can?
Was he here at all before I got here?
No. Law director couldn't make, he is gonna be here at six o'clock and he couldn't be here at five.
Okay.
So, you know, that's why we're, you know, fishing around a little bit for, you know, whether we can do it.
President Kud, I'm hesitating only because I don't wanna be duplicitous. If we're given that authority to hire that independent investigator via the charter and we remind ourselves that we have that authority, do we need a piece of legislation to do that to make our employees feel safe?
I mean, I think we're gonna need, we would need a, a contract. That's what we would need to do. We, you know, if, if, if we wanted to go that way, we'd need a contract. You're right, we don't need legislation to authorize us to do it, but we need, we need a contract, yeah.
Okay, so just so I've got the right mind, my head is straight here. So this particular ask is specific to hire an independent investigator for this particular situation, or is this legislation so we can give ourselves the right to do that?
No, we don't need, we don't need legislation to give us self, ourselves the right, but if, if counsel's going to launch an independent investigation into the work environment here, the overall work environment, we're not part of the investigation of the employee that's on administrative leave. That's already been, well, I mean, I suppose we could duplicate it, but, but that's, I don't think that's what we're talking about. Go ahead.
So I'd feel more comfortable hiring an HR consultant that knows this space and give them investigation capabilities so that they could find out exactly what is going on.
Well, somebody would have to write this up, you know, write up what the charge would be. Is that what you're volunteering to do?
Well, I, I would volunteer that, but I wouldn't be looking at this from hiring like a law firm. I mean, typically, like NOAC had an issue with their executive director, they hired a law firm. I'm not, I wouldn't take it from that perspective because you may get an investigation and they may tell you, yeah, this was either bad or this is good. I'd much rather someone measure the, the toxicity of our environment, get specific examples, and then come up with a solution on how to make sure this doesn't happen again. Like, such as like the eight-hundred number that Mr. Cobb suggested.
That makes sense. I, I certainly wasn't pushing a law firm or anything. I was just, you know, I, I expect we don't even mention that on here. Yeah, go ahead.
So the interview slash surveys or whatever you wanna call them, from Burgess and Burgess, they conducted data from staff and employees. Can we not request that information just to give us a starting point?
I heard the mayor say that's gonna be public information. Did, did we all hear the same? So I don't think we even, I mean, I guess we'd have to request it if we never got it, but he, I thought he said he was gonna make it public. Councilman Posh?
I'm just trying to get the date. There's, so apparently, there was a meeting that happened in the Communications Department where Burgess presented the findings of the employee part of their work...
I didn't know.
...on the thirteenth. And it's kinda weird because it's very suspicious because that's right around the time of the, of the allegations that Dan Horgan suggested, and I intend to put a public information request in to get those findings. I mean, they're available, they've been presented to staff or some members of staff. I think it's important that, and it's, and it's public information, and I think that would give us some insight of, of really what's going on, because I think that's what we're trying to find out here, so.
So I'm, again, I'm meeting with Director Hannah on Thursday, so I'll check into, just to make sure that we can contract someone, it could be an HR person, to look into the working climate here, and you can look into, if you want, what, what a contract like that would look like. Go ahead.
Who, mayor? Can we, can counsel actually contact Burgess and Burgess ourselves? Or could you come, contact them or someone else?
I, I think the first step would be to ask the administration before you're going around them.
No, I didn't, well, it's public, I'm not going around them.
Well, I kind of assumed that, I mean, if you can't get any information from the administration, but I mean, I think the proper channel is we contact the administration, I mean, just like what I'm gonna be doing. You know, I was gonna ask without a formal PRR.
We'd like to see that.
Yeah, we, we would like to see this information, because I think it's really important. Now, I mean, do I have, I mean, just, I mean, raising a hand, I mean, do I have support of counsel to, to make that ask?
Yes.
Because I don't wanna walk in, hey, Jim Posh wants to do it. I'd much rather say there appears to be a majority of counsel that, that...
I'd like to see that.
What's, what's the specific ask again?
Just to get the deliverable from the Burgess and Burgess contract.
I, I think that would be very helpful to get that, also determine the, the survey questions, whether employees were guaranteed that their responses were anonymous, and depending upon what we learn, that may determine whether we need to go, that will determine, I believe, our next step, whether we actually need to go and hire an outside HR firm to follow up on that.
Go ahead.
So Councilman Posh, you said that the survey's results were in, on what date you thought?
Thirteenth.
The thirteenth?
March.
Of March? And I think we've asked for that at the last meeting? We, we kind of asked that we would like to see that information and that's when the mayor said it would be public?
I'm not sure we knew enough about the survey at that point. I think there's...
No, no, what I'm saying is, we brought it up and I know that, at, at the time, the mayor said it would be public information.
But if I could just interject, I don't think we knew that it was done and presented on the March thirteenth. I didn't know.
Oh, I knew.
You knew? Well, I did not. So that's why, you know, I, I don't think, I mean, I didn't say, well, this time...
I guess we had suspicious...
Well, I need to say that I'm not an investigator, but, you know, there's a certain amount of chatter in the building that has occurred regarding that with former and current employees.
Correct.
No. But, yeah, I'm fine with all that. Anybody, any objections?
No. Can we also, with that, once you obtained that information, could you also find out if it's okay for us to actually talk with Burgess and Burgess regarding the results they came out with?
I can bring that up, sure.
All right, go ahead. So, Councilman Cobb, I'm only pointing to you because another lawyer, not you, said that we, we need to say publicly that there's a request for preservation of evidence and the rationale is to ensure because there's an ongoing investigation and possibly another investigation, that all digital video and other evidence is preserved for any investigation, you know, that nothing's, you know, deleted or, you know, it's kind of a standard practice when there's investigation on it, yeah.
So I think the bigger issue is when you meet with the law director, is there a formal records retention policy? Because that's generally what you'd find that would preserve evidence just because you would. Now, I think we discussed at one point, I think I discussed with the law director recently about videos and a lot of times, organizations would like to delete the videos quickly just because they don't wanna have to deal with things other than the storage of the video, because you have a lot of public information requests when in the building, when it's like, hey, we only store the videos for seven days, it only goes back that far. We, I think we need some, I, I think we need to make sure we've got a reasonable record retention. So for example, if someone leaves, if someone leaves the employment of the city, does their email get, email get deleted?
Right.
So when does Dan Horgan's emails get deleted?
I copied the questions.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Just doing a quick search. I, I think there is a record retention policy required by the Ohio sunshine law.
Yeah, every, every department has its own record retention schedule here. We have our own that I have to keep and then every department has their own. That is something, though, that I've been wanting to have as a whole, take a look at each department and update it, because I think it hasn't been updated in a while.
Howard. Yeah, it's something that's mandated through several different agencies at the same time, but I think having a, a list of when all that stuff is due, I think, is important. And I think rolling out, as just as an aside, reporting structures and the dates of all those two, I think, are critical and where they're coming from. I don't know if there's ever been any comprehensive list of those.
Yeah, it's not great.
Does it even include you now?
Yeah, it does, yeah, it does. It's been updated since and I think it's, it's been a while, though. I mean, it should, it, it generally should, is probably looked at every six or so... I mean, it should, it, it generally should, is probably looked at every six or so months, but I don't think there's been any major changes in quite a few years at this point, so.
All right. And I hope there's anything else.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, so these were outstanding questions that I don't believe were answered. You know, about key card access, whether that's still in the mayor's wife's hands, key card, you know, whether that was given or, you know, how it was acquired. And then some of these are questions people asked that weren't asked, you know. Did the mayor's wife have an office at City Hall? She routinely here during the two and a half months tenure. Access to city email, public records or the like? Permission to interact with staff, permission to direct staff? Was there any knowledge that staff was directed without your permission? And then, you know, I don't know, did we ever get, I don't know if the question was asked or answered on whether or not Mr. Horgan's emails that were subject to that public records request were ever, I don't think they were answered, but was, was there ever, did we ever get any answer about whether there was any interaction, you know, or any responses? I don't remember that. I mean, I don't know that it's, you know, I don't know how material that is to anything, but anyway, yeah.
Then you could add to that last question specifically. Were the emails regarding the employees' concerns about the harassment at work somehow specify that? Because right now it just looks like, the mayor did respond to, to Mr. Horgan's emails, asking him, you know, he was asking about projects. So there were responses in there, but they weren't directly to Mr. Horgan's emails concerning his concerns.
I'm sorry, that's, that's what I meant. I didn't put that in here, but I meant the emails that were between March third, thirteenth and when he resigned on March seventeenth. Because the only email interaction was one way, you know, Horgan to the mayor, yeah. That, I didn't mean, I did not mean emails in, in general, you know. This was the question. So, you know, it's up to the mayor if he wants to answer any of these questions.
I would ask, are you going to do that at your meeting with the mayor?
Yeah, I mean, I can, I printed them out, I could, I could bring them with me tomorrow. But what I want to know is, is there anything legislatively, because that's really, you know, what we do, that I missed that we talked about last Wednesday? And I'm going to call on you, Councilman, but I just wondered, did I miss anything that we talked about that could have been potential legislation but wasn't presented today? Okay, go ahead.
So when I looked at that slide, I just sort of like, the one word that kind of came to mind was ick.
Was what?
Ick. It's like, what a mess. This is not about the mayor's wife. I think we need to be really quick on that. I mean, the mayor has the, the option to bring his wife into the City Hall premise as a guest or for any other purpose administratively that, that, that the mayor chooses to do so. That is his right. I mean, where things sort of cross the line is, was there any unauthorized authority, improper influence, access to confidential information and workplace harassment that is, that, that has taken place? And I think that is administrative function and under the mayor's purview to manage and maintain and control and to keep the employees safe. So when I kind of look at this, I really don't, you know, I don't judge the, what, what I feel is improper to do anything with a guest that the mayor happens to have in this building that happens to be the mayor's wife. It's more about these ethical issues on having another party, like directing staff, for example, and causing a situation, I mean, I mean, causing a second, a situation that you make your guests so angry, you turn to the mayor and say, I want this person out of here. And then you find out that the mayor has, has, has done that. And I'm just, that's a hypothetical situation. I don't know if that's true or not. Oh, I'm not getting time to think.
I'm so sorry.
I'm sorry. I just want to be fair.
So I guess I, I guess I bring that up.
Okay. Go ahead.
I just have a clarifying question for Councilman Posh. So are you saying that it is okay for an employee or even the mayor to bring in a guest to come to work with you every single day to have an office in your office or desk chair in your office to be here 24 hours a day as long as they're not directing or sitting in meetings or giving interviews with the staff?
It's inappropriate. I will tell you, what you just laid out to me, in my opinion, is inappropriate. Has it crossed the line?
You mean the legality of it?
No. If, 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 if someone there is using a computer to do their own work at a table and your guest happens to be your wife, no. But if it, if it's causing some of the other things that I mentioned, I think the line has crossed at, at that point.
So a city employee can bring their husband in as a guest and sit, yeah, I'm just.
No, no, no. Can, can, can.
Let me finish.
I know where you're going.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just thinking of a work environment, period. People have guests. People come in and out, come to have lunch or different things like that. I just need a clarification of, it's okay for that? I am coming in, have lunch or whatever, but to bunker down every single day?
Key card access.
Key, key card access in and out, removing the, the ability to direct or talk to staff, period. Sometimes that just, that line just crosses sometime automatically because you're there all the time. So I'm just, I just, I'm not comfortable with that.
I, I, I appreciate what you're saying, but I would tell you, for a, a, a staff member, director level or anybody like that, no, that is not appropriate. It should never happen.
Okay.
But for the mayor, who is the senior administrative chief honcho of our city that we all elected into power, has that administrative right. Because theoretically, the mayor could do anything that he wants to do because he's the mayor of this city. Now, we got to make the decision if we like that or not. The, the, where I think the ethical issues get in are the issues I already, I raised.
Okay, well, you know, through our legislative role, we're going to, you know, keep trying to improve things, you know, as Councilman Cobb said, some of these things are surprising that we, you know, would have never anticipated, but you know, nonetheless, that's, that's our charge. And through the changes in our codified ordinances in our charter, council can, you know, certainly play an important role in keeping us accountable and transparent and responsive. So that's where we're at. If there's no objection, I would like to start the rest of the agenda legislative review because it's almost six o'clock and it's a minute or so away. And we got a, we have a pretty big agenda here. I'll start reading through this, although I would love for the law director to be here. You know, if we get stuck on something, we'll just go back when he comes in. Let me just make sure. All right, so first readings for consideration for adoption tonight. This is Resolution 48, 2025. This is a kind of an extension of an ongoing contract, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an extension of an agreement with Millennium Strategies. And this is for grant writing. Any questions about that? Yes.
I'm not sure we can get the answer to these questions. First was, when you go to the Millennium Strategies, the actual, what they call a grant track, the, when they talk about the different services that they will provide with, for this money, I'm curious to know how ingrained are they in City Hall with the implementation of grant administration services? I'm also curious to know if any of our staff are getting the training in hopes that they will have their own abilities to write grants in the future so that we don't need the services of a consultant.
So when you say ingrained, do you mean?
On site. On site.
On site, okay. I see Director's answer is here.
I may have missed the first part of Councilman Cobb's questions, but from what I heard when I.
Happy to start again.
I think I'll try to answer what I heard and then if I missed something.
Okay.
So the grant track, which is an add-on, is something that we would be getting access to, we'd be getting training in. And the idea is that helps us manage the grants. I would say that the experience in working with the grant writers, it's helped me and my staff on how to write grants. So I do think that there is an educational piece to it, but it's not necessarily part of the scope that we should totally lean ourselves off of them because often grant writing can just be laborious and having them there to do the research is very bad.
Okay, and then I wanted to know, so there's not really any training that, they're a consultant and they're not really specifically having training, grant writing 101 or anything?
No, they'll, they'll train us on the software, but not solely on grant writing 101.
Okay. And the last question I wanted to know was, which fund account will be using for this expenditure?
This comes out of the mayor's budget line, so there's, I don't know the exact line, but it's historically been shared.
For consultation?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Posh? So first of all, I want to commend the city for really making best use of this contract. If it's, just in 2024, if we gain the 2.3 million in additional revenues because of this work, I think it's really phenomenal. So I guess the question here is, this, this work comes out of the planning department? Is this mostly, is, is the, is the 2.3 million mostly all planning?
Well, it's, it's spread amongst all departments, but I think the majority of that number in the past year was related to planning department activities, particularly transportation. But there's public safety, sustainability, parks and rec. We happen to be sort of the primary contact, so I guess we have a little inside scoop on direct influence.
So the Safe Streets work, for example, and what we're voting on later tonight requires a lot of federal, not necessarily federal, it requires a lot of grants, it requires a lot of revenue. And that is, this work is imperative. Getting these people on board and maintaining them is imperative in order to execute that work.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman, for bringing that up. Resolution 49, 2025. This is authorizing critics, an extension of the critics LLC contract to continue public facing zoning software and services. Again, this is another ongoing contract. Question? Yes?
I'm also curious which fund this comes out of?
This one actually comes out of the planning department, the planning commission, the architectural board review. It's spread amongst all the planning review boards because it helps and assists people as they apply to the boards, so multiple examples.
Thank you.
All right. Resolution 50, 2025, another extension, SafeBuild. This is a SafeBuild contract for, how much money is it?
Fifty.
Fifty?
Fifty fifty.
Fifty K, all right.
And I know I was talking to Eric Elliott, he said that we are only using.
Thank you. I was going to ask that question.
Is it plumbing for commercial or plum, or just all across the board?
Oh, yeah, because we don't have, currently have, have that certification. Hopefully we will soon and then definitely we might need that service to be outsourced.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
That was my question.
51, 2025. This is a resolution amending and adopting the city of Cleveland High support for the ideals, principles and concepts of Mary Dunbar, I mean, Vision Zero. Can't always say her name when I say. Okay, no questions? All right. And then, oh, sorry, Councilwoman Larson?
I just had a question about section four of this particular piece of legislation because I did compare it to the one that Ms. Dunbar proposed. And section four is new, so I was curious as to why this was added.
You referring to the language about the formal actions of the council relating to the adoption being adopted in an open meeting with the council?
Yes.
That's like a standard boilerplate provision, frankly. It reinforces the council's compliance with the Open Meeting Act and was in every piece of legislation for many years. And recently in reviewing some legislation, we noticed that it had dropped out of some legislation.
So are we interested in it?
It's back in.
Cool, thank you.
All right, and then, 52, 2025. This is appointing Natalie Davis as an alternate to the Fair Practices Board. We actually talked about this last time. And now it's, that's the legislation. And then finally on first readings for adoption, the wage and salary ordinance for just Kane Park Youth Sports Ice Frink Pool.
Seasonal.
Seasonal, okay. Let's, I guess we could sum it up as seasonal workers. My understanding is, is that, Councilman Cobb, that we really maybe didn't exactly make decisions about other parts. I mean, I know we discussed things, but you can certainly have the floor here.
Right, so I, at my committee meeting, was that last week or week beforehand, we went over the salary ordinance in its entirety. And we did not have a, I guess, a recommendation to make and felt it best that this should get discussed by all of council. I think there's, there's not a lot of controversy about the salary ordinance. But let me, let me, the things that I think are something we need to discuss is that raises the mayor's salary to $150,000, that would be effective next year. It raises council salaries to $12,500 and it raises the council president's compensation. The, the ordinance proposes 16,500, we discussed 15,500 instead of the 16,000. So I don't know how people feel about those salary amounts. We, we need to make a determination about that. The other changes to that salary ordinance were to raise the compensation from the boards and commissions from $90 a meeting essentially to $125 a meeting. Or is it 115?
One fifteen.
$115 a meeting. And we were going to add the landmark commission to that.
So let me, I just want to ask the law director and then I want to go to Councilman Maddox. Is this like ready to go? And then, you know, I mean, if we were to come to like decisions on these details, if you will, is this pretty much ready to go?
At the risk of shockingly sound like, sounding like a jerk, when you say this, are you talking about seasonal or wage and salary?
The wage and salary, the rest of it.
I believe so, although I think I would want to talk with Councilman Cobb about the, the meeting and maybe review the meeting and make sure we're not missing anything that was addressed and be prepared to have that conversation. But it should be very close, subject to any changes that council determines to me.
Just had a quick question for anyone at the table, just regarding the mayor council salaries. Even before I say that, I full support in terms of increasing those, those payments for our boards and commissions and adding those. I think that's a long time coming. But in terms of, well, historically, have you, have you seen anyone do any kind of meetings or any kind of engagement around, feedback around salaries or something before a raise taken, like this would be taken into place, such a, especially with the mayor's raise was such an increase? I didn't know what type of community engagement ideas or maybe anyone, or any feedback anyone got because I, raising something like that is obviously going to get both attention. And I would like to at least find some kind of avenue to get feedback on it, but I didn't know historically if you've heard of any municipalities who've handled this in terms of how they might have gone about getting that feedback or so, but I know that's something we would definitely.
That's, it's a good question. We did discuss, I, I think the research that you did.
Looking at some other cities and it gets. Looking at some other cities and it gets, it's up there for a city of our size.
I think what councilman Maddox is asking is what was the methodology?
Well, the methodology was looking at the salary survey that the Ohio municipal league did. And we didn't, we didn't discuss that at the committee meeting. It's just, it's a document that's available to look at.
Okay.
Why don't I circulate that to all council members to see? And where we are.
And you were also asking about process for public input. So for what it's worth, what I've seen typically is these conversations are often a little awkward and sometimes there's a lot of public interest, sometimes there's not. But typically that comes up during the readings process. You know, Cleveland Heights's default reading rule is two readings. Many communities have a three reading rule. And so when something gets on the agenda that's going to make adjustments like this going forward, new terms only, of course, people show up at meetings if they have something to say about it. And sometimes there's a lot of discussion, sometimes there's less.
Yeah. I was just curious about that in terms of if this, this would, this is the type of thing where you've seen someone do like a public hearing or something about that or some type of feedback beforehand. But that, that makes a lot of sense. And I know when we start doing those readings, the expectation is that they come in. But at least for me, it's, it's something that before we pass, I would like to go the extra mile and make sure that the whole community knew what it was, whether we put something out as a body or not. Just, just because it's, it's such a huge change and that can jump. And, and any facts or explanation or links we can give them for that. But any opportunity that they have to do any type of feedback, I think absolutely, at least for those three or, or two positions, absolutely.
I, I, I dethel that, especially for council as well. I'm going to be the elephant in the room that nobody wants to see. But I think the residents should also weigh in on council salary for the municipality of this size. And I do know what other council members are, salaries are in other cities who are much smaller than ours. So I think that's a good ideal to get feedback from the community on that. So people don't think we're just raising our own salaries where it's actually coming feedback from the community.
All right. Now for first reading only.
Oh, Mr. President.
Yep.
So just for clarification, is, is it still in councilman Cobb's committee? Do we need to, or are we discussing again a committee? I didn't know where it was.
We didn't pass it out. We didn't pass it out of the committee with a recommendation. I think we just felt we need to discuss this by all of, by all of council.
Do, do you need us to attend administrative services?
Well, the, is it on the calendar yet for the last Monday of the month? But because we want it, we want to get this passed. So the, everyone that's not, I guess one thing we could do is we could pass on the salaries for the mayor and council and get it passed. So our employees at least get their salary adjustments and raises.
That was my next question.
You know what? I think that's a fantastic idea. And that way, you know, cause we're not in a hurry with the other stuff. It's, wouldn't even go into effect. You know, but the other stuff is more, you know.
So I was thinking more about this piece. So because the, the overall wage and salary ordinance isn't ready for action tonight, are there questions or concerns about the seasonal adjustments that the Parks and Rec folks put forth?
I guess in your, in your opinion, discussing based on what we just did, does it complicate passing this separately because, or?
I don't think so, because these would just be imported then to the subsequent measure without further change.
Okay.
And I think the reason why this got put on here now for adoption is because we've got to get going. Yeah, we don't have time to mess around with this. But, but you know, I'd be, I'm all for you bringing in, you know, putting on the April 21st agenda, everything minus council and the mayor, and, and we'll get going on that. Go ahead, councilman.
I absolutely think we have to vote to approve this increase for seasonal staff. We have to be fair to them and we need to be competitive. And it's time.
So I support this, but I have family members that work at the pools. So I just need to disclose that?
Uh, yes.
We can move on and let me know.
They could even call me to disclose.
Go ahead, councilman.
I want to pull this back up. Was this on first reading tonight?
For, for passage.
Okay. That's, that's what I was.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, there's going to be some onboarding, mass onboarding events soon. So if they can turn, we can also get them on so they can get everyone in.
Does, does anyone know if there's anything else time sensitive after this department wise that this would impact from a higher standpoint or anything?
I don't believe so.
But I, I'm sure the law department put this on here for that reason. It would've put other stuff. I, you know, that's an assumption.
I mean, Public Works has seasonal employees too. I would.
Oh, that's right. For our grass cut and our public properties. That's your fire hydrants.
Well, I'd like to think that, you know, a director would have, you know, kind of pushed that along if, if we needed it.
Not aware that we heard anything from them on that. But so maybe they're okay waiting until the, the major piece is done. Parks and Rec was concerned.
So on these first reading onlys, you know, if you, if, we could discuss them a little bit. There's, you know, no reason not to, but they are first reading only. So the first one is the amending, I'm sorry, it's 54, 2025, amending section 121.1, this would change the date the mayor's budget is due to council from the 15th of November to the 1st of November. I can just tell you the reasoning for doing it right now. And I, I know we're not voting on this tonight, but the reason for doing it as quickly as we can is because, you know, budgets are, it's quite a timeline and a lot goes into it. So if we are going to change it, we should give them the maximum lead time. But anybody want to talk about the length of time moving it up to weeks? Anybody think it ought to be, you know, a month or I don't know, just some, some other number? I can give you a rationale why I think it should be two weeks if you want to hear it.
I just.
Okay. So we know, you know, we know, especially going through this last budget process, we know we want October and November financials by the time we vote, right? And we know that we would at least appreciate an estimate of, cause we're not going to get the uncovered balance for the, you know, for 2025, for instance, if we're voting in December. But we, we could get an estimate of that. We know that we, we want a comprehensive budget that would include, you know, stuff like capital projects and so forth. And we know that when there's any complications, we're really, it's, it's really kind of frantic. I, I felt that we were like, come on, come on. We had to have all these extra meetings and, you know, and we really didn't know. I, I don't feel like, I'm going to speak for myself. I didn't really know if this budget wasn't working out until December 9th. That was my, you know, I'm just, I'm not speaking for anybody else. So then it was like, okay, then what do we do? And now we're, you know, it's December 9th and we have a meeting on the 16th. Now we're getting into like the end of the year. If we move it forward too far, we're, we're, you know, we're asking, we're going to be passing a budget with less information about the prior year. So I'm just trying to find a sweet spot. I'm not saying I found it eureka. I'm saying this seems right to me. The two weeks seems about right, but I'm wide open to listening.
I think it works. The only thing is the financial statements, like we're talking with director Hairston about, October would be, we'd prob, we would have September 30th, no doubt by then, by November 1st. I'm not sure we'd have October. So that may be coming to us during the process if we set November 1st. And you certainly won't have November.
No, but October, November, if we follow the timeline that the mayor and I are discussing now, we would have October, November before we vote.
Okay.
So if there was something that like really, I don't know, was disturbing if we got that, I mean, we'd still have time. Go ahead.
I'm just curious. Have, have you ever thought about maybe just doing like University Heights and do a temporary budget every year so that you have all of the information you need by the end of the year? I mean, it, it doesn't make sense to keep guessing and wondering what's going on. And if it's upfront and the city knows ahead of time that we're going to be doing a temporary budget every year and then voting on a full budget, then I don't think it would be such a panic because they know this already. And it's not taking away any ability to be paid or affecting the city. Nothing stopped. Everything kept going. But have council ever thought about, I mean, it would definitely give councilwoman Larson a real advantage because she would have all the numbers and she would have everything.
Or whoever the finance.
And whoever the chair is, we know she likes finance. So I'm just throwing that out there as something to think about.
I have thought about that. Matter of fact, I, I actually met with the mayor of University Heights last week and he, he swears by it. Actually swears a lot. But anyway, sorry, who else? That was bad. Could somebody, somebody else? Go ahead.
Okay. So I like this idea.
Which one?
The moving the dates.
Which weeks? Okay.
Because there has to be a certain amount of planning that has to take place. And you don't necessarily need to have final financial statements, but you need estimates because staff at that point needs to know what their plan is January 1st. They have to have already figured out all the capital things. And I think it's okay if the process evolves. It doesn't have to be set in stone. But I mean, getting a strong budget book, just like what happened two years ago. And I think with the finance director that we have, I have a high degree of confidence that that work will continue as it did two years ago. I also think we raised the importance of getting the budget done. So I don't think anybody wants to go through that drama again anymore. But I do think setting the tone to try to get it done earlier is important. I also think it's important to set some dates on the calendar. So I know we've got states that Addie, too bad Addie's not, I know she's running to a business, but I mean, let's have the dates set. I mean, maybe in the next month or two on when we're start, when we're going to start the budget hearings.
So that's what the mayor and I are working on now. And we, you know, the council, well, all of council will weigh in on all this. We're trying to get a calendar again that would be, you know, a little bit revised at least because, you know, you move these two weeks, you know, you're kind of changing, it's all interactive, right? But I, it's, you know, preliminarily it seems doable. Any other comments about this? And then we, okay. So the next ordinance, 55, 2025, an ordinance amending.
I just want council to consider maybe looking and investigating, starting with a temporary budget and then moving forward to a full budget. I just don't want the door closed on it. I just want you all to look into that and see how that could be very helpful for us and the city. And if people know it ahead of time, people are not sore in arms about it.
No, they're, you know, it's, it's one of those things. You know, it definitely has merit. 55, 2025, an ordinance amending various sections of Part 11 of the zoning code. This is called the Livable Neighborhoods Initiative. This is going to be, it's a new version of, what was it called before?
Places of Worship.
Places of Worship. So we're going to refer this to the planning commission because it's new again. Does that thing of new again? So I don't know if anybody wants to say anything, but I, you know, I think it would be worth going to the planning commission.
Just because the planning director is here, I'd like to thank him and his staff for working on this. And I'd also like to thank the chair of the planning commission who happens to be here for her diligence and trying to make sure that this got to us. So.
And the law department. Oh, yes. Go ahead.
Oh, councilman.
Director?
I know this has been pending for some time in various forms. Can we get some timeline on when we expect that this will come back to us to vote on?
Yeah, I wanted to actually, it's a good segue to just give a little context. So we've been working on this for some time. On March the 7th, we put it out for public review and comment. We received as of today, 47 comments. Forty-four are in support, one is against and two have questions. So the way should you act on this tonight, you would refer to the planning commission, you would, they would hear this at their May 14th meeting, I believe that is.
May?
Okay, there is no April meeting this year. And should you choose to put it to the PMV committee, that meeting should happen after planning commission, you recommend. And then we would work with the clerk to set up a hearing around that time or after that time. And that would be your public hearing, then a second reading. So we're looking at May, June as the time.
So.
Go ahead.
It does.
Do we believe it's feasible then that we will be able to vote on this before the summer recess if we take?
We believe it's feasible and that's what we.
Okay.
When would be the appropriate time for a council member to ask questions?
You could start asking those questions now, but certainly I think after the planning commission reviews it and provides their recommendation because they may have some changes that they recommend.
That's kind of what I figured. Okay. I, I mean, on the record, I would, I mean, I assume that it's going to go to council's committee for this?
I mean, I, that's the plan.
I'll hold my questions until.
And then, and then chairman may schedule hearings or I think cast a schedule hearings.
Yeah.
Okay, councilwoman.
Are those questions that came in available to the public to look at or?
Yeah, we're going to post that. A couple of questions that came in, we're going to add to the FAQ, frequently asked questions at municipal hearings. So that will continually be updated should people have comments over the next month or so.
Will you please let us know when they're up there? Thank you.
All right. Second reading, we have 36, 2025, a resolution adopting the city of Cleveland Heights comprehensive equitable safety action plan. Councilwoman Larson, do you want to say anything about this?
Actually, it was assigned to public safety and health.
The public safety and health had a great presentation and is generally in favor of supporting this. I don't believe we actually called a vote. Maybe we did, maybe we didn't, but we were all essentially in favor of it and commended the good work product that it is.
Yeah, that'd be what I would, understood and heard. Yes.
Council, council president, we will be giving during planning updates that same presentation.
All right. Actually, we have the, the CSAP people here. So we'll, in a minute, we just have one more and it's the fourth reading. This is 24, 245-2024, a fourth reading, an ordinance amending the zoning map for Park Synagogue. So any questions on that one? Certainly talked about it. I see Josh is here and I'm sorry. So we have, we have two people here.
Just going to thank the public for the feedback that we received on this. Everyone from the neighborhood and the staff for making sure everyone was engaged and for the work that you did, making sure that you didn't just lean in on the staff, but you went out there and do that work as well. It's, it's something awesome in the community. But to hear that it's not something that they just had to hold your hands, that you're invested in making sure that it engaged is really, really important. So I appreciate that. And I'm still hearing positive feedback about those, those meetings. So thank you.
Keep it up.
Thank you, President. Here's one point we wanted to make. If you remember the last time law had mentioned that we needed to reflect the actual action that was taking place of that, that is what this amended ordinance reflects. But there's also one aspect that, you know, we have worked in the public and from council related to one of those sort of coming into effect. And I'd like the law director to explain it much more succinctly.
Sure. So yeah, the, the first two sections just really in a, in a very straightforward way provide for the zoning of the property that was applied for with the specificity as to the parcels involved and the prior zoning district and the new zoning district. And then the update of the official zoning map of the city. Section three, as the, the planning director referred to, reflects the, some discussion that took place in public hearing and elsewhere and addresses a potential open question under the existing zoning code and says that notwithstanding any contrary provision to the Cleveland Heights zoning code, the approval of an S2 development planning project becomes final only when the approval of an S two development plan project becomes final only when approved by city council. So, um, just that, so that that's clear as everyone goes forward. This rezones the property, provides for how the development plan is, is finally approved and wraps that up.
Would you have a problem with me making a reference to you to read that? If, let's just say somebody makes a public comment tonight that, that that may clarify.
Sure.
You know?
Yeah. It's section three, I can read it.
No, I know, I just.
You read it so well.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
All right, so what am I doing here? Okay, so, um, that's it for legislative review, right on time, by the way, thirty minutes. So, uh, let's see, do we wanna move anything up here?
I wanna do the planning first.
Is, is the planning thing first seen?
It includes it.
Okay. Thank you, Josh and David. Director Zant, do you wanna do the, since you're.
I'm just.
On planning and economic development update is ten minutes. Do you wanna do that before we go into executive session? So we can talk about the CSAP thing. Okay. So I'll turn it over to you then.
You go first?
Sure.
All right, thank you, council for having us. So we've been working on the comprehensive safety action plan for a little over a year now. I guess it's getting close to a year and a half. We're happy to get this access and hopefully get it adopted this evening. This program comes out of the SS four A, um, which is the Safe Streets for All federal grant. This grant provides, uh, three different opportunities to cities and governments. Um, it provides a comprehensive safety action plan grant, where this is part of. Provides demonstration activities, which we've also applied for and were awarded. So we're looking for the contract with HWA at this time. And then implementation grants for also being DC this year as well. This grant is a two hundred thousand dollar, uh, safety action, uh, plan. Um, and this plan should develop a holistic, well-defined strategy to prevent roadway fatalities and serious injuries. And, uh, Kim Lee Horn was led, uh, as our consultant. Um, so I'll talk about, this is kind of what's in the plan, and we'll go through most of these sections as we go through this. But this entire plan is built around the safe systems approach, which through a combination of, of how all these different things on the screen interact with each other is really, is to eliminate serious injuries and fatalities on roadways.
Excuse me, Rosalinda. Can we, thank you. The progress in transparency, transparency component, um, how do you see that going forward? That you keep the updates coming out to us and we stay involved with CSAP as it's.
We'll, we'll touch on that as we, as we go through this.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Again, we started working on this in January officially. We've had several public meetings, uh, a lot of work with our stakeholders and our technical advisory committee, were really helpful in making sure this plan, uh, was as good as it was, and I'll touch on them later. We had website up and, up and running. We had, uh, maps for people to send in comments. We had pop-up events we attended, we'll get to all that, but this was a pretty comprehensive, schedule that we initially were trying to get done in eight months, and we ended up taking a year to get it all in. So we go to the safety analysis section, uh, which looked at the ten-year stretch. There's over seven thousand recorded crashes in that, in that stretch. Uh, twenty of those fatal, but we, of no, eleven in the last three years of the study. So while we see a lot of the overall crash numbers sort of starting to trend down, uh, it's really troubling to see that those fatality numbers, um, seem to be right.
Is that eleven separate crashes in which there was a fatality or is it eleven fatalities?
Eleven fatalities.
Okay. Potentially less than eleven crashes?
Potentially less than eleven.
Okay.
I think it happens to be one per.
Okay.
I have to double check.
I was, I was just curious about the data.
I think it's one per. And ninety-eight serious injuries. And then, so we started to look at where these things are happening. So we kind of broke it into two different categories. Where are the fatal and serious injuries happening? And to look for kind of trends both geographically and kind of what, what's going on in those areas and looking at bike and pedestrian crashes. And in the, uh, appendices of the plan, it goes into a lot of detail of what's going on in these neighborhoods in particular. So a lot of details on what the current conditions are. And we end up, I'll, I'll talk about how we, uh, got input on these sections. But these are really the, the target areas that the plan will get. As mentioned, we had a, a technical advisory committee. This is a member, this is a group that really informed, uh, the consultant team, our team, and, and what this plan should include. So that included a lot of city staff, Cuyahoga County staff, um, police and fire were represented, the RTA, the libraries, the schools, and a lot of the, uh, State Streets advocates. Around the Cleveland Heights, there were a lot of them. And it was good that, uh, we had a lot of participation, a lot of good ideas came from them. And one important thing to note is there is a desire for them to continue assisting us as we move through, as we move forward. So when we're looking at those performance, uh, key performance indicators, that they're gonna be holding us accountable and making sure that we're doing what this plan asks for us to do. And I, I briefly mentioned the, uh, engagement, collaboration, all the different events we had. We have a great website, safestreetsforch.com. Reviews of all of the public events that took place, the pop-up events. So it's a great place for, for folks to go that may not have been able to attend a event and wanna know everything that happened. It's a great place to go. One unique thing that we did on this, um, on this plan is we, through our consultant, hired a street team. We had a group of, uh, neighborhoods and, uh, be able to give more support and more involvement, um, than what we would normally see. And, uh, and trying to get, um, public engagement. They also led some of the events themselves, so like the Noble Fest pop-up event. We didn't have city staff there, we had one of their representatives there. Grace, who was an important member of that team, met with schoolchildren to get some feedback on the conditions that they experienced, kind of without city staff involvement, without other adults. And that's really important feedback that you probably wouldn't have got without the street team. There was also a public coordinate map that, that people could use, put in their ideas, where there was near hits, all that kind of stuff. So there was a lot of comments that came through, and then we also had comments that were submitted through the mayor's actions center that may not have really been in relation to this, but we did bring in those comments, um, if they applied to this plan as well. Equity, at least at the time, was a big consideration by the federal government. It was one of the central tenants, so equity. Equity was, uh, was considered and is heavily weighed, um, when we're looking at a project. If it, um, is near or in one of the disadvantaged tracks, whether it's a biologically disadvantaged, socially disadvantaged, um, that we make sure we heavily weight those, so we're trying to give them the attention that is required. So what changes are we expecting to see? So it's kind of broken up into two different things. We have policy, process changes, and then the fun stuff, the implementation changes. But we'll start with some of the policy and process changes. Uh, this is not all of them, this is not an exhaustive list. So looking at things like, um, evaluating low-end street limits where necessary. Looking at the push-button access for pedestrians and people rolling. Do they make sense? Are they ADA accessible? Even if they are ADA accessible, are they in a spot that makes it easy for people to cross? Working with Dr. Botang, uh, improving lighting, we know that that's an initiative in the city right now. And that's something that this plan called out. These next two kind of go together, looking at multimodal as a possibility for all improvements. And that kind of goes with the Complete and Green Streets policy. Doesn't necessarily mean that every street needs a bike lane, but there are things we can do to make it safer for people by walking and rolling, um, on a street. Doesn't necessarily mean it has to be a bike lane, there's a lot of other things we can do. This next one's already taken care of, so any new development, um, wire sidewalks. Of course, you guys have invested in the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program, continued investment in that program. And then I wanna touch on, uh, a topic that was brought up at the Public Self-Safety, Health and Safety Committee, which is in the role of enforcement. If we look at the CSAP, we can always see, there's only one place where enforcement is explicitly mentioned. And that is under DUI enforcement. It also talks about looking at enforcement around parking, but it doesn't necessarily specifically call that. And the parking regulation is really to make sure that crossings and intersections are safe for pedestrians trying to go, that he wasn't blocked from the car. But I will say that enforcement is not a recommendation for slowing down traffic. And it's not recommended for, for really three specific reasons. The first is we know that there's bias in policing. That doesn't necessarily have to mean that police are racist, there can be some other underlying factors of why there might be bias. And I'll touch on some of that in a second. Uh, we also know that it's unfairly, okay, sorry. Okay, um, so I'm gonna try to get through, okay, yeah, so speeding is not, is not something that should be controlled by, by the police. It should be done with design changes, it should be done by changing the geometry of the streets. Because we can't get angry at a person driving and treating this as a highway when it looks like a highway. So when we're going through the project selection, um, this is our, our scoring sheet. You can feel free to look at this throughout the plan. Some of the highlights are bike lanes on Lee Road, Mayfield Road, Taylor, Monticello. These are the kind of the segment changes that rose to the top of the list. And then we also looked at some of the point, some of the intersections and those sort of things. So looking at like leading, uh, pedestrian intervals at Cedar and Lee. High visibility crosswalks all throughout the Noble neighborhood. Looking at no turn on red at Cedar and Lee, no transportation, but it calls for no turn on red throughout the whole city. And then high visibility crosswalks in the street.
What's a high visibility crosswalk look like?
So it can mean a, a number of things, but if you think in, in the Cedar Lee district where we have the flashing beacons, so that's kind of the bare minimum. We can look to do other lighting, so you can have signalized lighting, you could have it in the ground. A bunch of different ways of just trying to make the pedestrians lit up in the crosswalk and, uh, alert the drivers that somebody is crossing at that time. So progress in transparency, the CSAP has been posted on the website for a while. We have the web, the Safe Streets for Cleveland Heights or for CH website. It is documented, all the public meetings. This should also be considered a living document, so as crash, new crash data comes in, we reevaluate, reevaluate this plan, see how we're doing. And a part of the, uh, federal requirements is that we do yearly reporting. So all of that stuff's gonna be available, uh, to make sure that we're, we're getting our part. Funding, we're going after as much funding as possible. I guess that's the, that's the short way of putting it, um, whether it's through the state or regional or federal. Next steps, we're looking for council adoption tonight. Uh, we'll be applying to those grants. Kind of the stuff we're recommending from city departments and council on any of the, anything we need going forward.
Any questions or comments?
I just wanna say that we saw this presentation at Public Safety and Health. So impressed about all the work that was done, the data that's being collected and will be collected going forward. And so I'll have no problem supporting this legislation at all.
Thank you so much for all of your work on this. I am so grateful that this is finally up for vote. If I could, you, uh, included a picture of Mayfield, and I agree that it looks like a highway. But given that that's a state route, does that designation make it any more difficult for us to implement traffic calming measures on that street?
Means there's another hurdle to jump through, but that shouldn't keep us.
Okay, great, thank you.
When you talk about lighting, safety lighting, is that for parks or main streets or just lighting everywhere? Anywhere? Yes, great. Wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. So I came across a, uh, safe, smart lighting, uh, that I would love for you to look at, to maybe see if it fits within that program. Actually, uh, in the neighborhoods of Taylor and Noble, they have been talking for years about how dark it is. But this lighting is, uh, lighting that when is censored. So when people are running and jogging, the lights actually illuminate four blocks at a time. And, uh, I kind of shared it with some of my council members because I wanted to use some, yes, Harper money that we wanted to use for some lighting and for safety features. And I think it was fantastic when I looked at it and went through it. I talked to, um, uh, Councilman Cobb to see how we come about to get, uh, funding and find out how much all of this costs. So you're the person, I'm gonna drop this in your lap.
I think Dr. Botang, who's doing the lighting stuff right now, might be the better person.
Okay.
Something we're definitely interested in.
Okay.
And I know the city of Cleveland, just west of Brooklyn, has some lights that has some sensors on it that will get a little brighter as you're walking by as well.
Yeah.
So it's already in the area.
Good.
I can get you the street name, I can't right off the top of my head, uh, that you can go and walk and see better person now.
So do you have a card that I can actually email this to you? And I will also email it to, um, Mr. Botang as well?
Uh, I have cards. I'm downstairs.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. All right, so, um, visitors, we're gonna move into executive session here. Can I have a?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to consider the lease or sale of city-owned real property and to consider confidential information related to the marketing plans, specific business strategy, production techniques, trade secrets, personal financial statements of an applicant, or economic development assistance or to negotiations with other political subdivisions requesting requests for economic development assistance as necessary to protect the interests of the applicant or their possible investment or expenditure of public funds made in connection with the economic development.
All right, time for a second.
Second.
Eddie Conroy?
Cobb.
Aye.
Nuta.
Aye.
Petrus.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Maddox.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Bosch.
Aye.
Okay, we are back from something consecutive session. We really just have a couple, um, items left. Any committee reports, legislative proposals?
Yes, sir. Okay, so, um, during an earlier meeting, I asked for permission to, uh, proceed with doing some research for a business advisory council, since we have committees for a lot of things in the city. So I just wanted to report back on that. And so I have drafted up, um, two purposes for this. One is to provide recommendations and advice to the city government on ways the city can support businesses. Cleveland Heights with a particular emphasis on small businesses. And to, two, provide a forum for businesses to raise issues and to discuss them with city officials. One thing that I think that we probably could all agree on is a requirement that, and I took this from the legislation for the Transportation Mobility Committee, that a quote, "Good faith effort shall be made to have appointments reflect the city's goal of racial, social, and geographic diversity." And, um, based on legislation that I've seen in some other cities, this is not a novel idea. This is something that exists in quite a few other places. Seems like committee of maybe, you know, nine to fifteen is appropriate. So I was going to just put out there a suggestion, um, two different suggestions. One is for a nine-member committee. A second is for a nine-member committee that also includes maybe the city administrator or some other staff member.
And what's it called? And what's it called?
Um, the Business Advisory Council.
Business Advisory Council.
Um, and so I was proposing that maybe if we have nine members on it, that maybe three of them be appointed by council, three be appointed by the mayor. So this is what I've gathered so far, and so I'd like to, um, see if this is sufficiently okay with people that we could work with the law department to draft something up.
Alright, any comments or?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Are the ones that you're looking at, do they have CIDS? Those cities have CIDS?
You know, that's, that's a good point. Um, some of the things, some of the cities were actually outside of Ohio. And so I suspect that, you know, maybe they don't have a CID, but maybe some variation of it. Um, but I could look into that to see if they did.
Yes.
I saw this as different from the CIDS because those are specific to business districts and this is, um, for the whole city. And really, um, my inspiration for this was hearing from business leaders that, you know, they felt like they could benefit from increased communication with the city. And so this would be like a designated opportunity for at least the members to raise concerns that, you know, they're aware of and to, you know, have them answered.
Oh, I just kind of had a question because I thought this off the top of my head. Would you ideally have, try to have business owners' representation from each district?
I mean, yeah, I think that that's part of geographic diversity. I think that that would be.
I would like to work with you on that, if you don't mind, since I'm head of the, since I'm the chair of the Plan and Development. But we're working on Noble with, uh,
Merchant.
a merchant association and Taylor with a merchant association. I would like to see where that goes and I don't know how, we need to probably talk with some of the CIDS just to see how that dynamic works, just to make sure everybody is comfortable. That's all.
Okay.
I, I think it's an excellent idea. I do think though that it does make sense to reach out to the CIDS because some people, not necessarily the CIDS, that felt like their feet had been stepped on with like the creation of other council committees, not council committees, but city committees.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, but really, I mean, don't, I mean, move forward with this. It sounds great. Great idea.
Just a little more investigation.
Yeah. Would it be okay for me to make a request to the law department and also reach out to the, the CIDS? I could try to talk with them in advance of the next council meeting and then report back on what I hear.
It's okay with me.
Is it okay? Okay, and then I'm, I need to work with you.
Could I also ask you in your housing committee, if you, have I done, stop me if I've asked this before, but I, I really would like you to review the fines for, um, code violations. I don't know if we're, I don't know if we're up to date there. I mean, I've, we've gotten chided a couple of times in emails, but I, you know, what I didn't do was look at other cities and see if, you know, ours compared to theirs, but it might be antiquated. And it was in the, I wanna say the NOVAC report, you know, to review that, and I don't think we ever did. And NOVAC report's gotta be five years old.
Nineteen or probably nineteen.
Okay.
So. We have, um, an agenda for next week's meeting already, but we could certainly link you this in the May meeting.
Thank you.
To be big.
Yeah.
Did you send me that?
Uh, no.
Okay. Could you look at, I know you and I were about to get together about a public hearing?
Yes, and that's coming up.
Okay. You, you scheduled, you have a date?
It's, I can't remember it right at the moment, but it's later this month.
Yeah.
Alright.
On a Tuesday, if I remember correctly.
You have the twenty-second, twenty-second? Twenty-second.
At what time?
At six.
Oh, I didn't know.
Any other committee reports or legislative proposals?
I'll be brief. Uh, one other topic discussed. My committee meeting was to address the pay inequality situation existing with the, uh, police chief and potentially with the fire chief that results in bargaining unit, people that they supervise, receiving more compensation than they do at a base salary. Uh, South Uglot has a ordinance that codifies that the police chief and the fire chief will be paid X percentage above the person that's the highest ranking member of the union. Uh, our recommendation, uh, was that we proceed with that legislation. And if everyone is on board with doing that, I've got something drafted. I'll get it to the law department for further review. I did ask, um, the finance director to run some numbers, um, for us, um, to give us some idea of the, of the potential cost of the budget, depending upon whether the salary differential is gonna be, uh, ten percent, um, thirteen percent or fourteen percent. The union contracts for both, the union contract for the police department has a thirteen percent differential between their ranks, that'd be between the lieutenant and the captain. And the fire department has a fourteen percent salary differential between their various ranks. So we would essentially take some percentage of that and have it applied. So the police chief would make X percentage above, uh, the captain and the fire chief, uh, and the assistant fire chief would make X percentage above the battalion chiefs, if I'm explaining that.
Um, excuse me, thank you, Councilman. To your, um, I think you said this, I just wanted to be clear. You're talking about base to base, not necessarily base plus overtime versus.
Right, it would be, it would be, it would be the base and that's in the legislation.
Okay.
Uh, and then also we're looking at, uh, affording them the same benefits as members of the bargaining unit. And, um, South Uglot and University Heights have done that by ordinance. So it's not necessary every year to do some adjustment based upon our annual passage of a salary ordinance. It just occurs automatically.
We also asked, uh, talked about adding that longevity pay and sick leave buyout as well.
So we would add, they'll be entitled to the same benefits as anyone. Because it is unfair that currently the captain and the police department makes more than the chief. And that's without even factoring in the overtime.
Which the chief, what, like, are they both eligible for overtime? I think.
No, the chief couldn't be, right?
Yeah, so that's kind of a fixed. Yeah, I get it, yeah. Wow.
And what is this? I have another question. Did we talk about retro for Chief Ritten?
And we're, we're, so the, the salary, um, there needs to be a component, I believe, of, at least for the, uh, police chief to get something retroactive back to the start of the union. Again, I need, I need to have the financial numbers on that. I know from the finance director. And I don't know that we, I'm thinking some percentage that's not gonna quite make him whole, but we'll do something to take it back to the start date of when the union contract went into effect, which was in April of twenty twenty-four. So I'll get all that proposed legislation to bill and then we can hopefully take a look at it at an upcoming meeting. If everyone's on board with doing that.
I am so happy that you're trying to write this wrong because it's just, I mean, what, the sitting in your committee meeting, finding out about it, it's just like, oh lordy, I mean, this is not fair. And it's too bad that he had it come to us as opposed to it wasn't considered at all when that contract was implemented. So, wow.
In fairness to the mayor, when the first time I did bring it up, he said he was, you know, looking at it. And, but we just hadn't gotten to that point, so this is pushing it forward. I also involved the public works director in that discussion. Um, there is no pay discrepancy between the highest employee at her bargaining unit and her director position.
Mr. President, if I might, I mean, also council determines the, the compensation for city employees. So it wouldn't have been done in the negotiation, at the end of the negotiation last year with the new agreement. You could have looked at, you know, the landscape with a different perspective and maybe council could have done something different. But just to be clear about who has the authority to make, make that adjustment to a range, for example, that's purely council.
Okay.
Let, let me do another question, um, about whatever percentage we were talking about with the chief in terms of making him whole. It, are you, would you be comfortable in just going ahead and correcting whatever it was? Or do you feel strongly there should be a percentage of that, whatever that total is?
Well, the, the question was how much retroactive pay would we, and I, it, it only affects the police chief as, uh, whether we wanted to take it all the way back to last year or some portion of the year. But what, for certain, he would get going forward from this April four. And if people want, I mean, I don't have any problem going back all the way. And I, I'd like to know the, the numbers from the finance director and, and make sure we can stick it in the budget.
If you could get those numbers, because I'm, I'm, I'm with you on that. I'm committed to that. I don't have a problem with going ahead and taking it all the way back to April and just clearing that, that out and just making a move versus trying to do a calculation or a price or half of that or so. I don't know what the council's appetite is, but I'm completely fine going back.
Director Hannah, is this a standard practice when you review this to, to do the retroactive? I don't know.
I mean, the retroactive, um, pay adjustment is not unusual. Like, the city has done it on a number of occasions when the salary was passed a little bit later. And you, um, go back, the collective bargaining agreements function the same way if they're not completed by April first, which is not.
Yeah, I mean, I just didn't want.
Those are retro. Going back to the prior year is a little bit out of the ordinary. Because it's usually looked at, you know.
That's what we need to look at, is just make sure that we're not, you know, breaking some new ground here when we really shouldn't be.
I don't think that there's a legal problem with it. We'll work through it, but I, I don't think that it's a problem from that perspective.
Is everybody comfortable having that go back to April first of twenty twenty-four? That was simply aligned with the union, police and fire?
Right. Okay, I'm okay with that.
I am most definitely, most definitely happy and supportive of that. And definitely supportive of going back home to April, making, making that gentleman whole. But also I've made it my business to ask on several occasions when the unions do their contract, don't that percentage falls over onto non-union members? And normally that's what happens. And evidently that has not happened in this case, so please make it right.
And that's what the benefit of having a union to negotiate on your behalf versus the other.
Yeah, yeah.
Employee.
I'm on her, those lines, but we need to, every time we did something with the unions, we'd have to go back and pass legislation for everyone else, right? To shift it, or is that, that's not something we could all, like, what would that look like, that process?
Well, you, you go through a process like that pretty much every year, um, potentially with, or, yeah. Um, I mean, the union contracts are every three years. But the, the decision-making about whether you chew up everybody to the same schedule of increases as the unions receive is something that council would, would just work through in its, in its evaluation of the wage and salary ordinance.
Okay. Is that something that we could legislate going forward that every time a change was made? That it would, it would come back and shift or is that something you wouldn't recommend that we review that every time that contract is?
I think I would not recommend it, um, as an automatic, um, because you never know, like, what the budget's gonna look like from year to year. And sometimes there are more significant increases in a particular bargaining unit because of what's happening in other communities that need to be competitive, et cetera, and some of those factors may not apply in the same way. You guys sort through all that stuff as you evaluate these questions every year. Um, keeping it in mind and, you know, doing what council determines is appropriate is perfectly fine. I'm just not sure that you would want to have a rule that locked you into a certain position each year.
Okay. Just to be clear, it's, it's normally not a rule locked in, but it's normally once you negotiate a contract every three years, whatever the percentage that the union gets, usually the administration automatically give that percentage to their employees. So it's usually, that's what I'm accustomed to.
Standard practice.
As a standard practice, and that's what I'm.
In our case, would we have to do through legislation that way? Like, like the administration couldn't just do that, right? Wouldn't we have to adjust that?
We, yeah, that would have to be in the salary.
So, okay.
Yeah, but we don't do it, they don't do it every year. They usually do it every contract year.
Okay.
Because usually contract years, when everybody's percentages go up, they negotiate those percentages and everything. Usually it's just a salary increase and then on the third year, they negotiate a full three percent, four percent, whatever salary increase there is for their bargaining.
Okay.
Alright, we just have a couple of minutes left.
Thank you so much, very much.
Quite welcome. Yes, um, so in at least three recent meetings, we've talked about road resurfacing, um, and some of ours interest in increasing the funding. Um, as a reminder, our former city administrator explained to me that an engineer took core samples and estimated that our city should be spending about six million dollars a year on roads. Um, as I previously stated, I was proposing that we increase the funding by two million dollars from two point three million to four point three million. Councilman Posh was suggesting four million. And, uh, Fund Two-O-One, which, uh, is the road resurfacing fund, is projected at the end of this year to have a balance of three point eight million dollars, which is plenty to fund this increase. And so I wanted to, while there will certainly be time to discuss the legislation and make comments on it, I wanted to see, um, if I could get permission to work with the law department to begin drafting.
Wait, what's the legislation? I'm sorry.
The legislation to increase the allocation of road resurfacing by two million dollars.
Any discussion? Go ahead.
I, I, I still like, before we do something like that, as I stated in the past, we, we've heard Director Kleenskill talk about capacity in that work. And I still don't think pass any legislation without having that, an in-depth conversation with her about what that looks like. If she could even spend any of that money in a year, I think is, is our first starting point. Um, I think she made it clear twice where her current capacity is. And I don't think increasing her funds is gonna change that capacity. So I really wanna know, um, are, are we just shifting this money there? Is it something she'd be able to use, how to, to get a greater sense of that if we're, if this is something that the majority of the council's gonna do? I think before we do any legislation, we need to bring her back to the table and have a conversation. Otherwise, we're just giving her two or three million dollars and she might have already stated, at, at least it seems on the surface, that she can't use this year anyway. And I just don't wanna give our residents the idea that, hey, we moved this money over, what's going on when she's done this presentation? So I, and, and I, I feel like we at least need to sit down and have another conversation with her in terms of what that amount might look like, what she could do with it this year, going in the next year, and what that might be. Just based on her, her past comments in the, in the, uh, presentation she did in that council meeting.
Yeah, I agree that we should certainly talk with her about capacity and we should think about, you know, whether there are additional positions that we could fund to assist her in with that. Um, I see these as parallel. So, um, knowing that we are already in April and that we want to potentially get bids out as soon as possible, um, I think that it would be prudent for us to go ahead with drafting this up. And then we could simultaneously have conversations and learn more.
How about we just bring, um, the director, she's on vacation right now, but bring her in when we can and just say, hey, can, can you come to us with a budget adjustment if the, if, if the, um, opportunity presents itself to do more than you, you think, you, you know, and that's on your plate right now? I mean, that would be another way. It's not, it's not as etched in stone, but go ahead.
Well, I mean, I think it's important that, you know, we've been told there's a capacity issue, but we are city council and we are part of the city's, you know, setting the city's roadmap, I mean, of, of how we do things and how things get funded. I mean, what can we do to support the public works department to increase the capacity of that department to digest this kind of stuff? And, you know, there's things that maybe have been considered. But this is sort of like the conversation that I wish we could have had if our budget process didn't get so elongated. We decided, and I think there was sort of a consensus amongst all of us, it's important to get the budget done, let's not tweak it. Let's come back quickly thereafter to make some tweaks. And what I believe, what I'm hearing has happened, is this is one of those tweaks that I happen to feel important to because I've mentioned publicly and I think some of my peers have, certainly you have. Uh, but we've also, you know, I'm concerned about some of these capacity issues. We left a lot of money on the table last year of stuff that just didn't get done. I mean, what can we do as council to try to help out? And I think that's in, in a collaborative way.
Yeah. Go ahead.
And that, that's why I would like to see us do that without legislation. I, I think it's heavy-handed to go in that way. Give you an example, if, if you remove public works out, I don't think that if we have, we felt like we were having safety issues in the city, we would just give the police chief two point five million dollars without having a conversation. If he's saying he can't hire people or he can't get that equipment in, or we can't get cars in on time. I, I think those conversations should happen before we draft legislation. I think it, it, it really does show a more collaborative effort than putting together this legislation, sliding across the table and then trying to fit whatever she's staying into it. I'm not stating that we, we shouldn't take a look at this or we shouldn't talk about what we can do to help with our capacity issues. I just don't like the idea of us drafting legislation, putting a number in there and then going back and making that the starting point. I, I'd like to bring her across the table and hear from, voice a customer and really get a sense of what we need to do first before we, we draft the legislation. I'm not saying that it might not be a good idea, but based on the last two conversations we had with her, I, I think it's, it, it, it doesn't work in terms of collaboration to just go ahead and just do this anyway. When the last thing we heard from her, there was a collab, there was a, a capacity issue. So I would just prefer if we have the conversation before we draft any legislation to make sure we're hearing from the people who are actually gonna be impacted by that first. Because maybe there is a different amount or, or maybe it's not roads at all. Maybe it's equipment. She's saying, hey, this would shift my capacity if you're willing to do this. This is something I thought about in two thousand twenty-six, maybe we can do now. But I think opening up the door to have a broader conversation before we had that number there, I think, might be helpful. Because a, again, maybe the investment isn't, um, on the street side or the roadside. Because a, again, maybe the investment isn't on the street side or the roadside in terms of the contracts. Maybe it's the equipment, maybe it's the personnel, maybe it's something else that we're missing that could expand our capacity to help it. But I, I, I still think we, we should bring her back in and have that conversation first.
I'm, I'm okay with that, so we, we gotta, we have to wrap it up. Is everybody okay with waiting and we'll invite her to the next committee of the hall or?
I mean, I, this is at least the fourth time that we've discussed this, so I think that it would be good if we did start preparing legislation and then we could always change numbers if we needed to. So that, that would be my ask, that we be allowed to proceed with that.
And I, and this, this is just kind of pertaining to the budget. Did, have, have we thought about or did we put that 1% in of that pension increase that's gonna be coming from the state? Because that is definitely gonna pass and we need to be thinking about adding that 1% to our budget and it's going to be increasing every year. So I just wanna make sure I put that on people's radar. I know a lot of cities have already added that 1% to their budget and I don't want us not to forget it.
That's for police and fire?
Correct.
Thank you for that.
I will find out the answer.
So where are we at on this? Do we do the, do we want him to move ahead with the preparation of the legislation or wait till we talk to?
I, I think a lot of the stuff has to get done in parallel. And I think if we come in with an open-ended thought of, this is not necessarily the money, we work with you on the, on the amount. But, I mean, the road work, planning this road work, I believe, needs to happen pretty quickly. I mean, they're, they're still working off of a list, from what we understand. I think time is of the essence.
So since we're, we're talking about capacity, machinery, and, you know, the actual road work, why don't we? I'm okay with you moving forward and if you leave that blank and we have the discussion so that, that whatever we decide to do is kind of a realistic, you know, based on this collaboration. Is that okay?
Of course, of course.
Is, I don't know, is everybody else okay with that?
Yes.
Because I think, I think putting a number on it right now is, I mean, we don't, you know, we, we, we could get more information. Alright, I don't have anything else, but on other, there are bagels and donuts here. Thank you to Chris Brace, if anybody here wants to grab some, are you, people grabbing?
Go for it.
Yeah, so, and then lastly, April 15th, 5 o'clock for the last, hopefully last charter get-together thing, you know, review thing that you need to do, that's a week from tomorrow. Is that 5 o'clock a week from tomorrow?
Tax day. Tax, real tax day.
Yeah.
Customer really went on.
Alright, can we at least tell it at least? Nobody's saying no.
I just want you to know that Jim Posh and I will be at the meeting in Mansfield, so that's over at 3:30 on the near.
That's tight.
Yeah.
That's tight.
So who's driving?
We're both, at this point, in two cars.
Okay, 'cause I'm just figuring if whoever drives the fastest is driving.
Oh, that's definitely.
No, definitely it'd be Jim.
So 5 o'clock doesn't work.
This meeting's worth a play, Drew.